All right, it is 8:18. And this is a committee of the whole meeting. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, approval of minutes for previous meeting for May 6, 2024, committee of the whole minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Alice.
I'll second.
Seconded by Chandra. And can we take a vote on this? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Additions, are there any additions to the agenda? Changes? Okay. Presentations and public input, is there any input for tonight's meeting? Public input, we don't have any presentations.
I'll say my name again, I'm Camille Cobb. I won't tell you again who I am. So, in this time, I'd like to describe to you the process that Barry Dunn used to come up with this figure of 44 officers who are needed, and then raise some questions about whether that, the assumptions that they're making along the way are reasonable assumptions. So, because, and so they've used, you know, like 30 pages to describe this, I hope that I can explain it clearly enough that you'll understand it in a few minutes. So first what we're gonna do, or what they've done, is we calculate the number of shifts we need to cover the obligated workload, which is just the number of calls for service, and how long it, on average, takes to respond to those calls for service, or how long it took last year here. And so, the way we calculate that number of shifts is we say, okay, well, if it took us 100-person hours to respond to all of these calls, and each person, or, and, so, to each of these calls, like, per day, we have 100-person hours we need to cover per day, shifts are 12 hours, okay, let's divide 100 by 12, it's super easy, I should've made it a more simple math equation, right, like, 144 divided by 12, we've got 12 shifts that we need. Right, so they, they do these, this kind of math. And then we figure out, so we figure out the number of shifts we need, and then there's a little bit more of a complication where they say, okay, well, but actually, we know that these happen, that they're shifts by time of day, we can adjust our shifts to factor in the time of day, and so, we need this number, or there's this many numbers of person hours we need to cover between these hours, this number of person hours we need to cover here, and this number we need here. And then, once we have that number of shifts, there is, you know, that is the number of people-hours we need per day, one individual is not going to work every single day, obviously, they are, you know, they have the schedule of, they work about half of the days, and then also, they take vacation time, this is totally reasonable. So Barry Dunn has calculated a, something called a shift relief factor, so once we know the number of shifts we need, we just multiply by this constant to figure out how many patrol officers we need. And so, in this report, that number is 2.55. Yeah. And so, we needed, you know, if we needed, per Barry Dunn's math, 17 shifts, we multiply that by 2.55, and then, they say that we need 41 officers, nope, that was 17 shifts, divided by time of day, so we multiply that by 2.55, and we need 44 officers. But how do we get to that math of 17 shifts? So we have to calculate the number of person-hours we need, or person-minutes, more often than minutes, because it's bigger numbers, and it's harder to read, which, it's also more accurate, but, yeah. So we calculate the number of person-hours that we're gonna need to respond. And so, what we do is, there's, you know, X number of crime calls for service, those take, on average, 71.22 minutes to respond to, there's this number of service calls for service, those take also around 70 minutes to respond to, and there's, you know, 400-ish per day, I think, I don't remember what I've got in this thing, but that many traffic calls for service, and those take about 25 minutes to respond to, or they took that long, on average, in Urbana, the previous year, or whatever year of data that Barry Dunn was looking at. And that's factoring in both the primary response and the backup response for the times when that's needed, right? So we figure out, we multiply the number of crime calls for service times the average time it takes to respond to that, the average, the number of service ones times the number of time, whatever, we then get a number that is the number of person-hours we need for responding to all of those types of calls, and, you know, I don't remember what I've got in this sheet right now, based on what I've got, but we can divide that by 365 to get the number per day, and then we can, then divide that by the amount of time during one shift that someone can respond to a call for service. So it's not actually dividing by 12, a 12-hour shift, it's instead dividing by 12 times 0.3, because, per Barry Dunn, the officer should only be spending 30% of their time responding to calls for service. And that's one of the assumptions that I really wanna, wanna call attention to. But also, in addition, in the Barry Dunn, for, to figure, to get to this figure of needing 44 officers, they've said, oh, but, the number of crime calls for service times the number of minutes and all these things, that's not the full picture, they say. They say, actually, when the police are on their, their, oh, shoot, what's it called? The time when they, their 40% time when they can do whatever they want, sometimes they do things that would've otherwise become a call for service, and so we can just add in those number of minutes that that would've taken. And it's actually a really big number that we just add in, and we're like, well, it would've become a call for service, so we should add that. I don't know whether that makes sense, to me, it seems pretty questionable, but, but they've done that. And so, we add that to the figure of crime times crime time, whatever, oh, shoot, amount of time. Anyway, there's some more questions, I've got a spreadsheet, I'm happy to share it with you, happy to talk this through with you. When I make assumptions of just 40% time on calls for service, or actually, if you just use the, a different department's average response time, you actually get the number of officers we already have. So even if you just make that assumption, and it's still 30, 30, 40, that's the, the number of officers we already have. So it's a pretty silly decision they've made. Thanks.
Hey there, everybody. Ben Jossel, once again, Urbana resident. Just wanted to address two more pieces. One is that, in some of the responses that Barry Dunn gave, in response to questions that were given, I thought it was amazing how many of the responses sort of trailed with, you didn't understand sort of the numbers that were there, we've got data from multiple different sources, but it's kinda hard to discern, so I want you to trust our professional expertise. But even more importantly, there were pieces where there was really clear narrative bias towards hiring more police officers. One of those questions asked was, in their report, they give a description of the city of Urbana, where they talk about how it's uniquely located between Chicago and Nashville, and talks about how that puts us in this sort of mini-metropolis area where we should then be sort of aware of crime that may be coming in along the interstate highways. A question was put to them about whether or not there's any sort of evidence that being located on that highway impacted the amount of crime we needed, or any sort of numbers to that effect. And I was sort of surprised when Michelle came forward and said, no, we don't have any sort of data that's been collected, but we do know that in this modern era, it's very common for, you know, criminals to use the interstate highway system. While I believe that to be true, I don't think that it belongs in a report given to the city that the criminals use roads. I think that that is a kind of fear-mongering and narrative bias that just has no place in a professional report. They don't get to imagine threats and then design policy to fit that fantasy. I also want to address the fact that folks have talked about how our police department is better than the LAPD or the New York Police Department. I absolutely believe this to be true. I've been in contact with police departments in many states, I've been sort of in the hands of police department in multiple states. And the way that the police were called to the protest on Friday, a couple weeks ago, the night of the marathon, I have, in my life, seen somewhat similar police escalations to protests. I've been at sort of rights protests and, and things in many states, and the way that the police came in, and they brought in, you know, state troopers in the Urbana Police Department, Champagne Police Department, they had folks standing there with cans of pepper spray. I've seen that kind of tactic before. I've never in my life before seen that not end in violent arrest. I don't believe that if they had been told to, our police department would not have also put their knees in my back, in the back of lots of other students, in the mud puddle they'd been standing in for hours on end. I think somebody else called them off, but I don't think that we're used to that level of arrest, and I don't think that our police department is as happy to, like, go and arrest people the way that it is in some other folks. So I've never seen a de-escalation happen the way that it did there. But I also don't think that the way that we want to be spending our resources is so close to the potential of violence which I witnessed there. Because we were very, very close to large-scale violence on Friday, a couple of weeks ago. I've been at places where folks get tased, I've been in places where, where things get really, really ugly, and it's really not good, and I was very, very scared, because the potential for violence was escalated. From my understanding, the only rule that had been broken was that students who were protesting for peace had put up a couple of tents, and that those tents were being considered structures, which was being called a, a sort of contradiction of, of university policy, and that no other rules were being broken. I heard this said by administrators. So for a few tents that were set up on the lawn at the university, at least five, if not more, police departments were brought in, including ours, and I don't think that's a proper use of our city funds. I do think that our police department is better, and I don't mean to say that all police departments are equal, and I'm glad that our police has more training. And, and, and yet, the way that we locate public service and public safety, I think, can start by putting in, in community resource and other pieces. So, just mean to say, where we locate and where we focus on supporting our community, that's, that's what I see, that's what I want to see paid for first. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sana, I live in Urbana. I just wanted to talk, or ask, and I know you can't respond to me, but I'll ask anyway. Based on the community input section on what was published in the Barry Dunn report, like, what were you hoping to know from the community? And I think, like, maybe talking about or thinking about what those questions are before soliciting feedback from the community, as like a council, might be something helpful? Because from the Barry Dunn report, you don't get a sense that they were, like, the community was asked questions like, how, where do you feel safe in Urbana? What are things that make you feel safe in your community? What are, where are places that you go when you want to feel safe? How many times is that the police, right? And like, maybe that's all the time, right? But we don't know the answer to those questions, and it doesn't seem like Barry Dunn was soliciting that. I wonder if there was any, like, effort to try to talk to people in your individual wards about what kinds of questions you want, like, you'd want a consultant to be asking the community? So, you know, moving forward, if we're trying to think about what alternative responses to policing could look like, and how that could be really community-based, I think it's really important to also, like, frame those questions based on what people are wanting to know, and even just what, what you are wanting to know, right? Because it seems like the basis of the Barry Dunn report was done with, like, a lens on alternatives to policing and racial justice, and it doesn't seem like community members were asked any direct questions about those things. So if that's what's really important to you, I just would like to see that information be public. That's all, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the committee of the whole? Okay, thank you. Steph? Oh, emails, that's right, I do have email here to read. Sorry. To Urbana City Council from Julie Watkins. I have listened to public comment from the council meeting video, April 29, 2024, and wanted to add my thoughts about the Barry Dunn report. I had been trying to follow the discussion of this issue, but was not able to follow it closely in the last few months because of a personal, of personal household issues. I am going on what other people said and the meetings I was able to attend last year. I can't remember if I had said this, I can't remember if I had said this in public comment to Urbana City Council, but I know I did say it at two different Barry Dunn public meetings, which were unrecorded. As speakers emphasized at the April 29. Is there something happening back there that needs to stop? Take it outside. As speakers emphasized at the April 29 meeting, the original intent was alternatives to policing. I asked on the web form, got no answer. I forgot what the response was in person. I objected to Barry Dunn, that they either didn't follow directions or got wrong instructions because the initial survey questions on the website were about police and fire, not alternatives. I felt it was an attempt to skew the results. Having the experience, I am not, I'm not surprised, having that experience, I'm not surprised that people who were able to analyze the report are concluding that the recommendations don't match the data. If the police contract mandates 12-hour shifts, then it should be doubly more practical to hire non-sworn community service people to staff peak service times for shorter shifts, with more training, with less per hour cost to Urbana. I agree with the people who spoke previously to accept the data, but revisit the recommendations. Thank you to everyone who has spoken on this issue, and thank you for your consideration of my additional input, Julie Watkins, Urbana resident. Chris?
Thank you. Dear Mayor Marlin and members of the Urbana City Council, as an Urbana resident, word four, I urge the mayor and council to heed the call of your community members to pursue alternative community resources, including alternative responder models, to provide care which increased spending on policing simply cannot supplant. I am continually, continually amazed by the number of organizations, coalitions, and partnerships across Urbana which actively work to keep this community safe, fed, housed, nurtured, and inspired. As you all know, there are great and increasing needs to be, to meet in Urbana, from the number of unhoused people, to food insecurity and utility shut-offs, which the Cunningham Township addresses, which should take precedent over any consideration to increase police budgets or hire more officers. Increased policing simply does not make sense, especially given that most, 72% of 911 calls in Urbana are nonviolent, noncriminal in nature, from the Barry Dunn report. I add my voice to those of so many of our, your community members who urge you to resist building a culture of fear and criminalizing and intimidating, surveillance and patrolling, debt and distrust, and instead, lean into what your community is telling you it urgently needs and wants. This will make Urbana thrive for everyone, including its police officers who are members of our community, too. I urge you to see the big picture and put our money towards our community. This is the only viable path forward for the remnants of our democracy. Thank you for your consideration. Lila Leopold.
Okay. Actually, we have the same one. Are there any more emails that need to be read, or, for public input? Okay, moving on then, staff reports. Okay, we have no staff reports, new business. We have on the agenda, resolution number 2024-05-08, 28R, a resolution approving the city of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, Champagne, Urbana, Champagne County, FY 2024 to 2025, annual action plan. And we have Brendan and, I forget your name, sir.
Pickleson.
Nick, is it Nick? Yeah.
That's me.
Okay. To give us information regarding this resolution.
Good evening, everyone. So, before you tonight is a resolution to approve our annual action plan for fiscal year 2024, 2025. This is something we bring to you every year. The annual action plan is submitted to HUD, and it covers three of our HUD-funded programs, our Community Development Block Grant, our Home Investment Partnership Program, and also our Home ARP program. So, attached to the memo, you will find the summary of the budget and recommendations for this upcoming fiscal year with these federal funds. In the plan itself, the CDBG and home resources that we will be receiving are outlined on pages 18 through 20 of the plan. So the plan, we will be submitting to HUD in July, and it outlines the, the activities and the projects that we will be undertaking with our, our federal resources in this upcoming fiscal year. We will be receiving three, an allocation of $389,487 in Community Development Block Grant funding, and $612,367 in home funding. The Home ARP allocation was a one-time allocation, so we have a rollover balance there, which is indicated in the, in the budget. One thing I wanted to note is that our allocations this year from HUD represent a pretty significant decrease from previous-year funding levels. We are looking at about a 21% decrease in home, home and CDBG funding this, this fiscal year. There's a lot of reasons for that, obviously, Congress is primarily responsible for setting that budget. The home program was cut nationwide, so any entity that receives home funding is, is seeing a reduction. Community Development Block Grant funding, similarly, Congress says they kept it stable from last year, but with inflation, that will result in essentially a decrease in, in funding to the Community Development Block Grant program. Due to our prior-year balances, we're not anticipating any impacts to our current programming or services that we offer, and we're hopeful that in the coming years, that will change. So now I'll pass it over to Nick to talk a little bit about the public input process that we went over.
Thanks, Brendan. So, the plan itself, which is included as an attachment, includes a more detailed summary of the public input process, and some of the things we heard from folks. Complete survey results are also included as an attachment, but I'll just provide a quick overview of how we saw outreach and some of the things we heard from folks. So to start with, we held two public hearings concurrent with our Community Development Commission meetings, one in the fall of last year and one in January of this year. And we also held focus groups with different groups of service providers in the community, including the Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless, the Human Services Council, and the Community Reinvestment Group. We also had a community needs survey that was shared through city social media, community partner organizations, and through mailings to households in our community development target areas. The last one, we hadn't previously done mailings to our target areas for these surveys, for our annual action plans, and we did receive a pretty large volume of responses this year compared to previous years. So that's something we were happy to see pay off in terms of outreach, and will look to build on in the future. Just in terms of numbers, we received 40 responses from local service providers and 176 from other residents in the community. And then, just why I broke it up that way, the survey did, the first question it asked was whether someone worked for, or was a representative of a local service provider, and then it prompted different questions to who was filling out the survey based on that answer, just so we were able to collect some more targeted input based on who was filling out the survey. Again, the survey results are included with the packet, but just to quickly go over some of the most common things we heard, service providers were most likely to identify funding, staffing, and housing availability as the major challenges to addressing local needs. Over half of service providers filling out the survey also identified awareness of services, transportation, cost of services, and provider capacity as obstacles they've seen clients face when accessing services. And then regarding service priorities, providers were most likely to rate affordable rental housing, rental assistance, homelessness prevention, and food security as high service priorities. Residents taking the survey most frequently cited housing affordability, public safety, and infrastructure needs as concerns in their neighborhood. And then homeowners and prospective homeowners taking the survey identified housing prices and housing stock conditions as the obstacles they regularly faced. And then, similarly, renters most frequently reported struggling with cost and poor property conditions as obstacles. And then residents in general, in terms of service priorities, most frequently identified both affordable rental and homebuyer housing, rehabilitation assistance, youth services, food security, and homelessness prevention as high service priorities. So that's a general overview of some of the things we've heard. I think you can hopefully see that reflected in the programs that we're funding this year. And then, if you want to see an outline in the plan itself, going over which programs we're planning for the next year, and how the budgeting corresponds to those, that's included in the AP 35 section of the plan, which is found on pages 29 through 38. Brendan, I don't know if you want to follow up with final steps as far as submission to HUD, otherwise we can take questions.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate, so the public input process is really foundational to our annual action planning process. We will submit all of this public input to HUD along with our plan. You know, we are, we design our, our plans and our, our projects based on what we're hearing from the community, so we were really excited to see that we got a pretty good feedback from, from our residents on that. So, once the plan is approved, like I mentioned earlier, we will be submitting it to HUD, the deadline is July 16. The program year starts July 1st, so this funding will, will take effect July 1st of 2024. So yeah, we'll take any questions.
Mary Alice?
I have two quick questions. The first one is that in your very first goal, provide decent affordable housing, housing opportunities, you say home has $4 million for that particular one. I assume that includes rollover?
It does include rollover, it also includes our Home ARP balance as well.
Which is about two? I noticed one of them was two, I don't remember which one, though.
The Home ARP carryover balance is just over 2 million.
Okay. And then my second question is, can you tell me, out of the three different funds, which one is limited in terms of services?
Yeah, so the, the Community Development Block Grant is the more flexible pool of funding, that's the, that's the funding source we use for, like, our youth services, for example. Home funds have to be used for, like, affordable housing development or rental assistance. Basically, if you use home funds, the result has to be a new affordable unit is developed, so home is a little bit more restricted. Home ARP is, is kind of both, so Home ARP can be used for development, but it also has funding for service programs as well.
I seem to remember a discussion about 15% cap.
Yeah.
Was that home?
The 15%, that's our public service cap, so that's CDBG. So the, the CDBG grant, we can use up to 15% of our allocation on, on public services, so that would include things like our youth services grant program, any, like, rental assistance, or any sort of service like that we'd be providing to the community would fall into that public service cap.
All right, thank you.
Chandra?
Could you tell me how many, like, roof repair grants were offered in the, in this past fiscal year?
I don't have that specific number. I believe we've done five or six to date of the roof repair and replacement program. Our kind of broader housing rehabilitation program, which is for low-income residents, I think we average about, I think we've typically averaged between 30 and 40 a year. This year, I think we're actually on track to exceed that, which is good.
So essentially, there's like, that, if, if it's not used for, like, one specific, it could be used for something else, like, if there's not enough roof repair opportunities, then it goes somewhere else within that category?
We need to, we, we do typically need to stick with, within the, the bounds of the budget that we have, so, so you will see, for example, in CDBG, our, our housing rehabilitation line, under the CDBG housing programs, we've budgeted $135,000 for that. So if, if we think that there's gonna need to be a change to that budget, we would come back to all of you with a budget amendment.
Okay, because I just saw it lumped with senior grant, emergency grant, access grant, roof repair.
Yeah, oh, oh, yes. Those are all within that, that one category, and we, we could, within that, go, yeah, back and forth.
Okay, thanks.
Grace?
Thank you. I've got a few here, I hope, quick.
I've got a few here, I hope, quick questions. Clarify, Mary Alice, you're talking about that fifteen percent cap for public services and CDBG, and that's why the youth services can only be fifty-eight K out of this, but then the rest comes from the general fund or other sources in the pot that we've had historically, right?
Correct, for our youth services program.
And then I'm guessing then, is it the same thing for CHODO? If there's only thirty K, but that's usually a bigger pot? Are there other sources for that as well?
No, so for our community housing development organization set-asides, the CHODO operating, that's capped at five percent, which is why we're at that thirty thousand dollars. And we don't have another source to kind of supplement that. So, it's, you know, that's the cap we have to stick with. And then the CHODO set-aside, which is for development, so actually like construction costs, that one, we have a fifteen percent minimum that we have to commit. So, this year, we're committing slightly more just because our two CHODOs, Habitat for Humanity and First Followers, they've had a lot of high-quality projects, so we're committing more. We're committing one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that this year.
Cool, thank you. And would we still approve any new expenditures? Like, for example, if we wanted to use any of these earmarked funds for demo and rehabilitation on city-owned property, downtown buildings, all of that would be a separate approval process, is that correct?
Yeah, any sort of agreement or contract that has to be approved would come back to council.
Okay, and then last one, I'm still so confused why fire station equipment is still in here and how that plays into anything.
So, that's an eligible expense under community development block grant funding, and it would be for, it would not be any sort of construction or hard costs. It would be for like supplies that are used to serve residents, so EMS or whatever sort of equipment that they might use. So, we have that in there just in case there were something to come up, so we can be responsive to those needs. But it's an eligible expense, and so traditionally, we've included it in there. During COVID, I think there were some materials that were purchased, and equipment purchased for the fire department to help them respond to emergency calls.
Okay, thank you so much for explaining that. And you think then outside of kind of COVID-specialized equipment, that's not something typically that we've had an expenditure need come up, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Brayden or Nick? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, who, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chandra.
I was going to do a motion. I'll move approval of resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-zero-five-dash-zero-two-A-R. A resolution approving the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, Champaign-Urbana-Champaign County, fiscal year twenty-two-four to twenty-two-five, annual action plan onto City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
So, Chandra moved it, James seconded it for consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, discussion? Further questions for the presenters? Grace?
Just thanks Brayden and Nick on this new process this year, something that I find confusing and frustrating and appreciate you explaining more of it and really appreciate the money that goes out here. So, appreciate what you're doing in your office, thank you.
Okay, so, can I get a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes? A regular agenda. Next is resolution.
Consent.
I'm sorry, consent, consent agenda. I'm trying to write this down as I go, thank you for correcting me. Resolution number twenty-two-four-zero-five-zero-two-nine-R. Resolution approving amendment one, number one, to an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Housing Navigation Program, Home ARP-FY twenty-two-one to twenty-two. And Brayden is there.
So, this item and the next one, I'll actually be discussing together because they're both essentially the same. So, these are two resolutions to amend to home consortium subrecipient agreements, one with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, the other with CU at Home. And the amendments would extend the agreement terms from June thirtieth of this year to June thirtieth of twenty-two-five. All other provisions of the original agreements would remain the same. So, just for a little background, and this relates to the home ARP funding that we were just discussing. So, back in twenty-two-one, we received home ARP funding, which was through the American Rescue Plan Act, and there was a budget line for supportive services. So, we did execute several subrecipient agreements with local agencies that were providing services to low-income residents and particularly residents who had experienced homelessness. So, two of the agreements, CU at Home, like I said, and RPC, requested that they would be able to extend their grant period so they can roll over their balances to next fiscal year and continue their program. Both of these programs were housing navigation programs, so for their clients to help them find and retain stable housing. So, RPC had a balance of, has a balance of seventy thousand dollars that they are hoping to roll over to the next fiscal year. CU at Home has a balance of about twenty-two thousand dollars that they are hoping to roll over to the next fiscal year. So, approving of this resolution would allow us to roll over those funds so that CU at Home and Regional Planning Commission can continue their programs through the next fiscal year until the funds run out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brayden regarding the next two resolutions, actually? Okay.
Make a motion?
Yes, you may make a motion, Mary Alice.
All right, on the consent agenda, I move approval of resolution number twenty-two-four-zero-five-zero-two-nine-R. Resolution approving amendment number one to an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement with Champaign County Regional Planning Commission for the Housing Navigation Program, Home ARP fiscal year twenty-two-one, twenty-two, to City Council.
You're second?
Second. That's Grace.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Grace. Discussion? Can I get a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is the resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-zero-five-dash-zero-three-zero-R. Resolution approving amendment number one to an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement, CU at Home LLC Housing Navigation Program, Home ARP-FY twenty-two-one, twenty-two. And Brayden explained to us that this is basically the same as the previous resolution. Do you have anything else to add, Brayden?
Uh, no.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Can I move to the consent agenda, the resolution that Sharice just said, to City Council?
Truly, yes, you can move it, any seconds?
Second.
Okay, James seconded it. The consent agenda. Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that's passed also to consent agenda. Next is number four, thank you Brayden. A resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-zero-five-dash-zero-three-one-R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement to share costs for use of a GPS survey-based station. Hello, Tim?
Good evening.
Okay, Tim will be giving us information regarding this resolution.
Yes, this is something that we've done for two different five-year terms. This is essentially a cost share of us using a GPS-based station with other GIS consortium members. It's a cost savings measure. There are other opportunities out there for us to do this type of stuff, to use our GPS equipment for mapping purposes, but this is a cost-effective way that we've done it for over a decade now, and we're re-upping another five-year term with this. I think some of the Cliff Notes from this is the cost actually went down extremely rare. I'm not sure the exact function of how that came. U of I kind of generated that and provided that to us. I think some of it was the fact that there's some virtual networks available now that are more cost-effective, and I'm guessing the cost of operations and maintenance has been found to not be excessive for them. So, that would be my prediction on why our cost share has went down for the next five-year term. We don't anticipate any change in service or anything of that nature.
Are there any questions for Tim? Okay, so, can I entertain a motion, somebody?
I'll move resolution number twenty-two-four-dash-zero-five-dash-zero-three-one-R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement to share costs for the use of GPS survey-based station onto City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Mary Alice?
I just had a quick question because I think in terms of who this is with, so there's multiple people here, not just the university.
The, the.
Multiple entities.
The IGA is between us and multiple entities that are part of the GIS consortium.
Right, so before this proceeds, can we get a second on the motion that's on the floor? And then we can proceed to questions and discussion, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Anybody seconding?
Second.
Grace, thank you, Grace. Now, moving on again, going back to Mary Alice.
I just wanted to confirm, it's all the different groups already in CGIS?
Not a hundred percent of the groups in CGIS. The ones that can actually take advantage due to their locality to the university. But yes, essentially, we are entering an IGA with others to then authorize the consortium to enter into an agreement with U of I for the cost sharing. So, we pay the consortium, the consortium pays U of I.
Any other questions for Tim? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda it is. Ordinance number twenty-two-four-zero-five-zero-two-zero. Ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-four, Section twenty-four forty-nine, reimbursement for sanitary sewer repairs.
Okay, so just some Cliff Notes on this. This is a program that we've operated going on sixteen, seventeen years now, I think, and it's had multiple iterations. The intent of this reimbursement program was to offset costs of people's, extra costs of maintaining their sewer lateral within the right-of-way and the extra cost of repairing, replacing pavement and things of that nature. The Cliff Notes of this is that we're trying, what we're doing in the Dr. Ellis subdivision with the lateral lining program, we'd like to extend this as an option within this program. So, if and when someone finds that they've got a lateral repair that's within the right-of-way and would require potential digging, if it is in shape that would allow it to be lined in lieu of open excavation, we would like to just formalize that as an alternative within this program, which ultimately ends up saving the city money, it saves the homeowners' money, and it's a proven means and methods that we've done on our own sewer lines for decades now. So, what we're trying to do with this is really just introduce it as an option within the amendment. And then I've got a little bit more background information to share with you, but that's kind of the overview. You know, like I talked about, this would be to address repairs within the right-of-way on sewer laterals, as you can kind of see delineated here. Things that would require us to excavate public pavement, sidewalk, things of that nature. The intent is that this reimburses property owners for their expenses for these extra costs that not all property owners are born with for roadway, sidewalk, curb and gutter repairs. As you can see, these are just pictures of what the open excavation stuff looks like. It's disruptive to traffic and transportation and people's lives, and it's messy, and it's costly. So, some background on the lateral reimbursement program. Right now, it doesn't specifically include cured-and-place pipe lining or other rehabilitation methods. There are instances that this would probably be a feasible alternative when the breaks aren't bad enough that they can actually be lined through, which reduces the cost. It essentially installs in an existing pipe without open excavation. They blow a liner through and then cure it out, and what it does is kind of builds a pipe in a pipe without excavation. Provides other indirect benefits. So, when they do this type of stuff, it reduces groundwater infiltration to our system, which is good for us and good for the sanitary district as well. Just a little statistic here at the bottom, on the ARPA-funded pilot project in the Dr. Ellis subdivision, right now, we have more than seventy-five percent of properties participating, which is great. And, you know, I would say we've, I would just commend our staff for a great community engagement. Sharice has participated in that, the community themselves have come out, and I think it's been super successful thus far, and we're entering the inspections and repairs type stuff right now. Just some fiscal and budget impacts from including this. So, in many cases, we're feasible, not every repair is going to be eligible to be lined through. Some are just so bad that you have to dig them up. But for ones that could and would impact the right-of-way, we would like to introduce the CIPP as a more cost-effective, reliable alternative, equally reliable alternative to repair and replacement. Right now, we don't propose any changes to the annual budget. Currently, we budget fifty thousand dollars per fiscal year to help reimburse these type of things, which has historically been about adequate. It's right around fifty thousand many years. The, another benefit of this would be is if we introduce this and more properties have feasible alternatives to this, we have potential to assist more properties, that the money just goes further. We looked at the last ten reimbursements generically. You know, as of now, we don't, a hundred percent of them, we don't know that we have good film to say whether it is or isn't feasible. But in theory, if the last ten of these were all feasible to be lined in lieu of repair, and that may not be the truth in the matter, but just for a comparison, what that would look like for us is the total cost of those last ten repairs have been a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, so a little over eleven thousand dollars on average. If we were able to line a hundred percent of those, that would have been about half the price of fifty-five thousand dollars to do the same effort. And the city's reimbursement would have, on the last ten repairs, has been forty-four thousand. If we were able to line it, it would reduce to thirty thousand dollars, saving the city about fourteen thousand dollars on the last ten repairs. Also, a big impact here is the cost paid by property owners for these type of things. The last ten repairs have cost property owners about seventy-two thousand dollars, seventy-two hundred dollars per lateral. And with CIPP lining, and as we proposed it here, we would project that that would cost them closer to twenty-five thousand dollars, saving them about forty-seven hundred dollars per property, if feasible. The way it's proposed now, you know, we would propose that if this was a feasible alternative for repair within the right-of-ways, the city would help with costs within the right-of-way, not outside of the right-of-way. So, if they opted to do their entire line, which is probably pretty typical, that we would participate in the portion within the right-of-way. There's a chart there to the right that just kind of shows you the cost comparisons and how much further our money would stretch in those, in the scenarios if and when we can use the CIPP lining in lieu of replace and repair. And this is just the amended text that would essentially allow this as a feasible alternative to repair and replacement within the right-of-way. They would still have to be eligible for the reimbursement program as written. No other changes would be made to that. So, if someone had a replacement that was required, we would still be entertaining those as part of the program, and there'd be no change to that. And that's the overview.
Chris?
Yeah, Tim, thanks for the presentation. And this question, maybe, I don't know, Sharice, this might be a question for you, but can the property owners afford these costs?
I mean, you're.
I guess you have.
You're stuck with it. I mean, if it's bad enough and you're blocked and you can't go anywhere, you become inhabitable eventually, so you'll be stuck with it one way or the other. Or your facility would be uninhabitable eventually. That's not like that happens immediately, but if you don't have use of your plumbing services and things like that, there are other issues that could lead into HVAC things and other instances that could further deteriorate the property.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
So, I remember when we changed the reimbursement plan, and it was at ninety-five percent. This is different, right? Because we're not, part of that was had to do with tearing up the road.
Correct.
So, is the cost share fifty-five percent for the, no?
It's essentially the, with, if lining is eligible, the ninety-five percent still governs. Typically, if someone ends up lining their entire liner, they're never going to hit the ninety-five percent on the portion within the right-of-way. they're never going to hit the 95% on the portion within the right-of-way.
Right.
It'll probably end up being closer to like a 50-50 split. But in theory, we would honor up to 95% of the cost.
Of the area that we are from right-of-way.
Correct. So there are things where you can do, they're basically sleeve liners. So you could go in and do a five or 10-foot section instead of doing your entire lateral if you didn't need to. That would be an instance where that 95% might kick in.
So, did you say it was, if you did an entire lateral, a standard size? I know they're not standard whatsoever. What is, what is the full cost?
Well, for the ARPA lateral lining project, we've budgeted about $8,500 per lining. That includes some extra things, like if we have to do spot repairs with it, if we have to introduce a clean-out. If a clean-out's present and no spot repairs are necessary, that probably comes down from there closer to like the $5,000 to $6,000 range.
This might be a silly question, but how would this be impacted if you had blockage in the sewer? So, I mean, tree roots, you have to call somebody to clean it out. How would the liner impact that?
I mean, technically, tree roots and stuff are going to just get in through breaks and cracks in the pipe and things like that. Typically, what would happen is we would go in, we would cut out any present roots, and then we would line through, and the roots would not have infiltration points anymore, because there's no joints in a liner.
Thank you.
Grace?
Could you remind me, with the Dr. Ellis ARPA program, is that covering private property lining as well, or only the city? I thought that was also private.
The Dr. Ellis covers the private.
Okay.
And that's part of us piloting that was the idea of we want to, we want people to participate. So we're doing more than what is part of just this reimbursement program. And part of this is, I view this as an interim step. You know, just to get this introduced, we have instances that have come up where lining would be more affordable, but it's like a $15,000 repair where the city would pick up $13,000 of it. They could line it for $7,000, but with no incentive for them, they end up paying less for the repair, and the city pays a bunch more. So the idea is getting it, getting this in there as an option for when they're able. And then I think what we learn out of the Dr. Ellis subdivision pilot lining program will probably inform us more on what we want to do long-term. And do we want to, I could see potentially at some point the lateral lining being peeled out as a whole separate program eventually. But we would like to get it introduced so that if and when these come up, we can make smart decisions along the way.
Yeah, it totally makes sense. And so then this one is just adding the lining as an option for the reimbursement for, you said, up to 95% of the cost on the city-owned right-of-way.
Correct.
Thank you.
They still have to meet all the provisions that are currently within the lateral reimbursement program. There has to be recorded issues at the property. There has to be evidence of the breakage within the right-of-way, things of that nature. And with lining, we'll probably be asking people. Typically, what happens is they have someone come out, snake a line, televise a line. We'll ask them to just get a copy of the recording so that we can just verify. You know, we don't want a contractor coming in and just saying, yeah, we can line through it, even though they shouldn't. Like, we're still going to kind of do a QAQC on some of that stuff.
Grace?
I was just nerdily curious if you had any information you could share at a later time about the actual material composition of these liners and their plastics, just with that being the new emerging thing of the microplastics and PFAS that are poisoning us now. But, I mean, I maybe have lead pipes in my drinking water thing in my house at that point. So just as we're always learning more, I'm just curious if there's any foreseeable things with this as well.
Yeah, we've got data on that. That came up through the Dr. Ellis subdivision lining program, and we've got a bunch of information on all of that.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'd be curious on that.
Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a minute?
I will take the chair, and the chair recognizes Sharice.
Okay, I have some questions, since I am uniquely informed regarding this. A few years back, my issue and my question was why we want to add the CIPP now? That's great. I always wondered how come pipe busting wasn't part of the reimbursement program, which is also less invasive, and it costs less. And I would still like to see that included, if we're going to include the lining. I don't, I also do not understand why we can't include the pipe busting process that can be done, especially when a pipe has to go across the street to get to the main lateral. So I don't know if this is something that we should bring up at a different time, or if it's something that can also be added while we're adding the CIPP. The other question I have, of course, is also regarding the fact that with the reimbursement program, and I don't know if this is still in place, people were required to fill out a tax form. And I don't know if that's still in place regarding that they have to claim income that they may have to pay interest on if they got a loan from a bank or something, and how we are working where that's concerned with the communities that may have to deal with this type of, of repair. So can you give me some information on it?
Sure. So pipe bursting, we'd have to look into a little bit more. It's not that we can't do it. It's, it is a means and methods that's used from time to time. Typically, my understanding of those, you would need an access point on both ends, which would then still require you, if you have to get into the street, to have a point there of connection.
You have to have at least a clean-out.
You would, I think with pipe bursting, you have to have two ends. So you'd potentially still have to be digging up that other end to make sure that that connection is solid. And typically, pipe bursting, there's less contractors that do that stuff. Usually, you're looking at pipe bursting, lining is more affordable. You're looking at pipe bursting if you don't have area within your pipe. So, super small pipes where you couldn't do a liner and still maintain adequate flow would be a concern there. But, you know, typically, most of our pipes are four to six inches for residential, and lining would still be approved in those size of pipes for residential laterals. So it's not that pipe bursting couldn't be entertained. I think we'd have to look into it a little bit more to just see the viability of it. And financially, it's probably, wouldn't be the preferred method over lining.
I'm just thinking in terms of if a pipe has to be replaced, rather than cut up the street to get to it, if that's where the repair needs to be, that there would be a way of doing a pipe bursting process, and that costs less than cutting up the street and excavating and doing all that other stuff. Am I incorrect in thinking that?
I think the hang-up, when I think about it, the logistics of it, and I've not done pipe bursting myself, but with a pipe bursting, typically, when you're doing it like on a municipal sewer, you're going manhole to manhole, because you have connection points that you can get down in there and ensure your connections are made up once you've pipe bursted. So if you try to do pipe bursting from a clean-out, you don't have a point of access. You don't have a manhole unless your service is coming into a manhole to ensure that connection made. So you'd be basically pipe bursting in, and then you don't have a connection make up there, which potentially, that's where a lot of problems happen, is the connections to the main lines. So you may end up having to dig up the street either way if you're pipe bursting. I'd have to confirm that, but I would, I would say we could look into it, but I wouldn't propose to try to push it forward with this currently.
Okay.
And then your other one?
I would definitely like for you to look into it.
We will look into it. I'll get you some information on it.
Okay, and the other question I had was about having citizens or residents fill out a tax 1090, I forget what it was, W-9.
Yeah, yeah, and as of now, I don't think there's any getting around that just from financial responsibilities. If the city pays out money to a vendor over a certain amount, I think we were required to report that.
So does the vendor fill out the W-9, or the resident fills out the W-9?
The resident would be considered the vendor in that situation. They're the ones that we're paying. We're not paying the contractor.
Okay, yeah, I still have an issue with that.
And we've looked at trying to get creative financing there. It's just, there's not a good way that we've found yet. So we're still working at that, but as of now, the research has not been.
Yeah, because I know the last discussion regarding that with you and I, and I think Mayor Marlin was there, and Robert Lewis, and we were talking about a way that the city could provide that kind of, some kind of help without having people fill out a W-9 regarding that.
Yeah, my guess is the W-9 is probably hard to get around. But I think what we were looking at was trying to help set up something with like a local bank where people could get the initial portion financed, because the city was going to pay so much back immediately to relieve the burden for financial institutions to loan that money.
Yeah, because everybody doesn't have $5,000, $10,000 to.
Right.
Because that's about the cost of it.
Yeah.
Okey-doke.
So that was something that we looked into, and the previous city council did. Would you like the chair back?
Yes, I would.
All right, I relinquish it back to you.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion at this point, if anyone wants to give one.
I can give a motion. I move, this is an ordinance, so it can't go on consent, correct? Oh, we'll just see it. I will move on the consent agenda to City Council, Ordinance Number 2024-05-020, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 24, Section 24 hyphen 49, reimbursement for sanitary sewer repairs.
Give it a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jaya. Discussion? Okay, clerk, will you please call the roll?
You can do a voice vote since it's not final action, because we'll take roll call at council, even though it's an ordinance.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? And so it passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks for all the information. And now, council input and communication. Anybody got something to say? Okay, Mayor Marlin.
Just want to let folks know that the groundbreaking ceremony for the fire stations is set for June 12th at 11:00 a.m. at the Goodwin and Bradley Avenue site. And you'll be, there'll be more details to follow, but save the date.
Any other information that needs to be passed? Okay, thank you for coming, and I can adjourn this meeting. COW is adjourned.